Meeting to order. Wait, this is not me. This is Finance and Administration.
That's me. That's me.
I'll call the Committee of Education Policy to order. We will take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do we have any discussion? I don't think we have. Do we?
No, but I have an abstention since I wasn't.
Okay. Oh, any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, that item passes. We will now address the action items of the policy calendar. Policy item 1B1 is a resolution to establish a program in nurse anesthesia, adult gerontology, acute care, leading to the Doctor of Nursing Practice at Hunter College. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel to provide further background on the item.
Thank you. The national and local shortage of certified registered nurse anesthetists will intensify over the next year, 10 years, sorry, as half of this workforce is expected to retire. The shortage will be exacerbated by the increase in demand for surgical and interventional procedures as the population ages. The proposed DNP program will produce well-educated health professionals in this critical specialty in which there is a substantial student interest. A significant percentage of enrolled students will likely come from traditionally underrepresented populations and therefore help diversify the profession. The Hunter College School of Nursing has a long history of providing quality nursing education and responding to emerging needs in the healthcare profession. A new DNP program in nurse anesthesia, adult gerontology, acute care will complement Hunter College's other successful DNP programs: adult gerontology, primary care, and the psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner programs. In addition, Hunter College has the requisite faculty, classroom, administrative, and library resources, as well as physical space, including laboratories, to support the program. Right now, Luce is distributing an updated estimate of costs. We caught some errors in the earlier version. I'm not sure if that means we need to amend the proposal, but I did want to get that in front of you. And should the committee have additional questions about the program? My esteemed colleague, interim Provost Manoj Partisani, is here today to answer questions.
Thanks, Wendy. So I move the approval of policy item 1B1A. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Of course.
Yes. We might want to have the representatives from Hunter come on up. Yeah. Just make sure the microphone is on. Yep.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. First, let me say, look, it's a terrific program and it's a needed program. Given what we've been hearing over the last several months, I'm very concerned about the finances. A couple of quick things, like in the first two years, even with these estimates, the program seems to run close to $100,000 a year deficit. And the question is, certainly with city cuts coming and not being sure where the state is, when can we afford it? And the second part of it is, in looking at these numbers, we start with 12 students, 16 the second year, 20 the third year, and ongoing. I don't see any account for attrition. And this is a very intensive program. It's not a cheap program. I mean, it's $100,000 over three years in tuition. Very intense. People aren't going to be able to hold another job. You know, I'm concerned about attrition and how we deal with it. So if you could...
Sure. First, I must apologize on behalf of my office and the School of Nursing because there were some errors in the budget proposal that was submitted. And as a result, the narrative was affected by it as well. So this program came about because we were approached by Weill Cornell and Memorial Sloan-Kettering about the significant shortage of CRNAs in the field. And what is exciting about this program is that it's truly a partnership program. And they're going to send their nurses into the program and allow them to time off from work to get in, to complete the program. It takes three years to complete the program. So that's the exciting part. And that's why we started small at 12, because we know these are the nurses that are coming to us from Weill Cornell and Memorial Sloan-Kettering. They've also committed, as it says in our proposal, to training them and proctoring them while they're at the hospital to do their clinical rotation. Yes, the first two years, there is a deficit. Let me address different issues, and please stop me and ask questions. There is a deficit in the first and second year based on the number of students, but we have already committed foundational support of $1.2 million that we have in private funding, which will cover any of those deficits as we go forward. So we're not really out of that money. The other issue, and this was an error on our part when we were doing the budget, 12 students in the first year, 16 students in the second year, 20 students in the third year. What our budget didn't do is add the tuition of continuing students. So the budget shows only 12 students tuition in the first year, only 16 students in the second year, but it would be 28 students because the program is three years long. And then in the third year, it would be 40 students tuition. So we add up over five years, the total tuition that we would generate is about $8.26 million, which includes tuition of $7,600,000, and then $1,000,002 of private money, foundational support that we've raised. And the expenses for the first five years would be $7.361 million. So we would actually end up with a budget surplus over five years with $898,421. So there's actually support for this program in terms of revenue and what we've raised and what tuition would come in and what our expenses are. In addition to that, what we have done is keeping an attrition in mind. Each year, we will actually take in two extra students. So instead of 12 in the first year, we want to take in 14. In the second year, we'll take in 18 instead of 16. And in the third year, we'll take in 22 instead of 20. Because we're looking at our attrition rates in all our other DNP programs, and we do really well with retaining our students in all our DNP programs. We have three different tracks right now: adult gerontology, psychiatric mental health, and acute care. And all of them, our retention rates are 95% or so.
Just to nitpick, as I continue on this, mate. Even with the foundation support, you're still $100,000 short in each of the first two years. But my other question is, is the program expandable? And is this going to start this fall in September or a year from September?
We're hoping to have it start this fall. We already have commitments from Weill Cornell and Memorial Sloan-Kettering on sending us students. And that's why we were sort of moving this forward this calendar, because we want to get, the next step is New York State, NICE said, to get their approval so we could start marketing and recruiting in the spring.
And how disastrous would it be if we put this off for one year? You don't have to answer that. I mean, it's just, you know, I'm just... I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Actually, just had a clarification question. And it kind of relates to the initial question on the budget, which is, on the foundation, has the foundation allocated the monies the way they're allocated here? Because otherwise, I guess it's more of an accounting issue. You could front-load the surplus to wipe out the deficit at those first two years, right? Or is it that you're not going to draw down those monies until the later years?
We have the money committed.
Okay.
So it's in our foundation at this time.
Okay.
And the funder would like to see us getting started as soon as possible. There was a delay because we were going through a presidential transition here as well. And so there was a delay of that. And so now it's like everybody's really concerned about another delay, including our community partners, the two hospitals. They really want us to get us going.
So is there any reason you couldn't front... Just again, sort of in terms of sort of being, looking at, you could front-load 100K and reduce the deficit, reduce the surplus in the out-years, right, net?
It should be possible.
Yes. I don't want to speak for the funders, but yes, I think it's really possible to do that.
As long as the money's in hand, it's not a cash flow provision. Money's there. It's allocated for the program if you use it in year one versus spreading it over five years.
Is that New York Pres or is that Columbia Pres which are both east and west campuses supporting this?
No, Weill Cornell on the east side, as well as Memorial Sloan-Kettering.
Okay, so east side hospitals, not Columbia on the west side, which is, they're affiliated, you know. That would be nice.
It would be. I mean, I think this program has a lot of potential to grow. We were trying to manage this because it's the first time we're doing it. So we want to make sure with a smaller cohort, we're testing it out, the model, making sure the curriculum is right, the proctoring is right. But we've already been approached by other partners. Our biggest partner for all our other nursing programs is health and hospitals, but we haven't gotten to them yet because we want to make sure that this works right and is a quality program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item passes. Policy item 1B2A is a resolution to amend the Queen's College Academic Senate Charter. I now call on Executive Vice Chancellor Hensel to provide further background.
The proposed changes to the Queen's College Academic Charter would allow lecturers who hold a certificate of continuous employment to stand for election to departmental personnel and budget committees and serve on them subject to the same limits that apply to non-tenured assistant professors. The college maintains that these lecturers have demonstrated an extended professional commitment to Queen's College and have been evaluated and determined to be expert teachers. In addition, the college views the changes as serving two functions: creating a more inclusive governance structure that recognizes the important contributions of lecturers to the operation and mission of a department and to the college at large in giving increased weight to the role of teaching and departmental decision-making. Our colleague, President Frank Wu, is in attendance today and can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So I move the approval of policy item 1B2A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I know John.
So I have real reservations about the implications the change in governance proposed by Queen's College has on the university. The proposed change empowering lectures with CCE to have the same ability to serve on departmental PMBs as non-tenured associate professors is troubling. In Article 5 of the Manual of General Policy, we can see the board's thoughts on this matter. One, it is the intent of the Board of Trustees that faculty decisions concerning tenure shall be rendered by committees composed predominantly of tenured members. Accordingly, no member, no more than one non-tenured faculty member shall serve on departmental personnel and budget committees. Two, no faculty member who does not hold senior rank associate professor or professor shall vote on any promotion to full professor. These allow for amendments such as Queen's, and indeed, at John Jay, there is already in place a similar allowance. However, in the Queen's case, lecturers need not even hold a terminal degree, typically the PhD, to be able to vote on tenure decisions. Tenure, in my view, being the most... The most important decision for defining and shaping an institution. Tenure should have as rigorous a structure as promotion, in my view. Further, lecturers, unlike non-tenured assistant professors, have no promotional track outside of the informal lobbying of their department chair. This has the possibility of impacting the independence of any decision, as contrary opinions to the chair may have repercussions. While I have no doubt my Queen's College and John Jay College colleagues aren't subject to such pressures and are judicious enough in their own approval of colleagues for such service roles, it does not seem like a step forward for the university to further the precedent. As such, I will abstain from this vote.
Frank, did you want to?
Would you like to make any response to that?
Sure. Thank you, Frank Wu here, President of Queen's College. I respect shared governance. This comes out of our economic senate. So this is not an administration proposal. However, I represent Queen's College. I'll just offer two very brief comments. The first is, of course, we've hired an enormous number of new lecturers with the state money. And that is a reflection of the desire to have full-time lecturers as members of the scholarly community at Queen's College. The second is, in some of the smaller departments, there's actually a simple, practical problem. There aren't enough people to constitute the PMB without this. And so if this doesn't pass, those departments are left in a precarious position where they must look outside their actual discipline and cognate fields in order to actually populate the PMB. And those are reasons, in addition to the more egalitarian spirit, that we hope to foster. I'm happy to take any additional questions.
We have any other questions? Yes, John?
I'll say expedience may be compelling, but I don't find it that overwhelming an argument. I, for example, served on the Gutman PMB, where they had a similar issue, not identical, where they had to ramp up their tenured faculty members before they could form a full-fledged PMB. I would imagine the university and all its creativity could come up with a better way than empowering lecturers who do not have a PhD to serve as, on the boat of determining who will hold tenure in a department. And the fact that there are small departments is maybe a structural thing that could be solved otherwise. And the intent of the lecturer initiative was not to supplant full-time tenure-track faculty. Rather, it was to enhance teaching faculty. And the intent was always to maintain the full-time faculty lines so that these smaller departments shouldn't be in place. They should have, the expectation was that there'd be additional lines, not the same number of total lines per department.
Yes, Henry?
Has there been any discussion within the senate of non-PhD holders serving on these committees and voting on tenure and full professor promotions?
Yes, there was a lively discussion of this very issue, and the senate ultimately did pass this. So I understand it in the CUNY system. The senates are all constituted slightly differently. And our senate, for the past 50 years, has just generally been more egalitarian. For example, one-third of the senators are students. So at Queen's College, our governance system has, for two generations, been just simply more egalitarian. And we're not the only one. As was mentioned, John Jay is similar. So there are other examples within the very CUNY system of what we propose.
I must say, I share some of trustee Vazani's concerns, given my background. And I'm going to abstain on this, although with further discussion, I might be convinced at a later date, but I'm going to abstain on this.
Any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Two abstentions? Any opposed? So does that pass?
Yes, but, I mean, unless you want to just table it so you can bring it back.
I think, I think maybe we should, with this much dissent, I would say perhaps we table it for further...
You should make a motion to lay it over.
Okay, so I will make a motion to lay this over to the next thing so we can have further discussion and understanding of the impact. Do I have a second?
How crucial would this be if we do that?
Wendy, do you?
Well, we have had the smaller departments operate, but partly, this was put forward so that they wouldn't continue to have this problem where they can't muster a PMB. It's frustrating for those departments. And that practical aspect was one of the reasons why the senate ultimately passed this, following robust discussion.
Couldn't we...
When is the next cycle, just to come up?
The middle of December. I think one thing to also keep in mind, President Wu said this, but maybe it's worth mentioning this again. This was a faculty-driven resolution. This is not an administrative resolution. And the faculty of the Queen's College voted in favor of this change to their governance document, so.
Why can't we have an interim period where we, the majority approved of it, and then bring it back to discussion if we need to?
I don't know if that, does that kind of muddy the waters? Go ahead, John.
In my limited research here, I found that this was actually proposed by the deans at Queen's College. So I pushed back against the characterization as faculty-driven. However, it was definitely faculty-approved unanimously, so. And as much as I want to support my Queen's colleagues, I personally feel as a faculty member that this is an incorrect way for the university to go forward. I don't want to imply anyway that the Queen's College faculty are behind this. That's for sure, although I don't believe it was driven by the faculty. I think it was driven by the deans, who see this as a necessary step forward. I think maybe there's other ways that it could be circumvented.
I'll just emphasize, it was passed, I believe unanimously, as is noted by the faculty. Our deans, to my chagrin, view themselves more closely with the faculty than they do with the upper administration of the institution.
So from a precedent setting, I mean, we, from a CUNY central, we do allow these decisions to happen at the college level.
And John Jay currently has the structure in place.
Same place. This is not breaking the...
This is not new ground. No.
I don't understand why we can't do this in the interim and then if there has to be another vote at another time. I mean, let's keep the school, keep it going. Let's keep this, I think it's, my view...
Today will be to recommend it to the full board. So it will come up again at the full board for discussion.
When is that?
The board meeting's on December 12th.
So can we approve this now and then come back?
What you're recommending is that this be put on the calendar.
Put onto the board, so there's still another...
So you would like an additional report in the meantime, with some additional...
I think that's probably the best way.
The full board meeting, that'll give you another chance to answer these questions.
But can they operate between now?
They can operate until the board actually votes a decision.
Till the board approves. We're just a committee. No matter what we do here today, they can't do it. We're recommending it to the board. The full board has to approve or deny.
Okay.
And I will speak with the Chair of the Senate and see if there's any additional material to be forwarded in support of this.
That sounds like a...
Thank you for your consideration. I will say that until the senate passed this, as president, I was not actually aware of this issue. So that is the extent to which this was faculty-driven.
So I'm going to rescind my motion to table this. And instead, let's revote to say, are we recommending this to be approved by the full board at their December meeting? So all in favor? Aye. Abstentions? Any declination? Okay, so that this will move forward to the full board. Thank you.
Thank you.
So policy item 1B3A through 1B3I pertain to the recertification of nine centers and institutes across three CUNY colleges. Again, I call on Provost Hensel to provide further information.
The proposed action to authorize recertification of nine of our centers and institutes is carried out in compliance with the current Board of Trustees policy 1.09, which requires such entities to be recertified every five years. In preparation for recertification, colleges and schools have been engaged in a thorough assessment and evaluation of all existing centers, institutes, and consortia, including any applicable governance approval. The Office of Academic Affairs has rigorously reviewed recertification requests that have been approved by the campuses, including reports on the specific centers, institutes, or consortiums' fiscal viability, governance, and continued value. In addition, OAA has affirmed that the entities support the core mission of the colleges and the university. The colleges recommend recertification of the following centers and institutes: Based at Baruch College, the Howard J. Samuel State and City Policy Center, whose mission is to fund and present comprehensive research on policies and practices, central to New York policymaking and administration; the Robert A. Schwartz Center for Trading and Financial Markets Research, which is dedicated to promoting the inclusion of trading in security market structure, in academic curricula, and to creating experiential learning opportunities; the Robert Ziklin Center for Corporate Integrity, dedicated to raising awareness of fiduciary and ethical obligations of corporations and other participants in the U.S. economic system, as well as to support the new laws and regulations that will bolster the prosperity of American business; Based at Brooklyn College, BCCC? The Brooklyn College Cancer Center Community Outreach, Research and Education, funded to enhance the lives of patients affected by cancer, with a special focus on underserved Brooklyn residents, while focusing on research, education, and community service; the Haitian Studies Institute, which contributes to the advancement of the academic field of Haitian studies through interdisciplinary research and practices, and involves other campuses, including York, Kingsborough, City College, CSI, City Tech, and the School of Professional Studies; the Ethel R. Wolf Institute for Humanities, which supports excellence in research, publication, teaching, and all forms of academic discourse, and sponsors an annual faculty fellowship; the Science and Resilience Institute at Jamaica Bay, whose mission is to produce integrated knowledge that increases biodiversity, well-being, and adaptive capacity in coastal communities and waters surrounding Jamaica Bay and New York City. It was established as a partnership with the National Park Service, the City of New York, and a consortium of seven other research institutions. Based at City College, the Benjamin Levitch Institute for Physicochemical Hydrodynamics, where faculty work cooperatively on interdisciplinary problems in soft matter physics, including fluid and granular mechanics, molecular dynamic simulations, interfacial science, and network and data science theory; the Macromolecular Assemblies Institute, whose goal is to build on current research and educational programs throughout the university to address fundamental and applied questions at the frontier of life sciences research. Leaders from Baruch, Brooklyn, and City College are here today to answer questions about any of these centers or institutes that you may have questions about.
Thank you. So I move the approval of policy item 1B3A through 1B3I. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussions on this?
I think the most important issue in each of the resolutions is these are not supported by tax dollars.
We did, as, as we, as I read, quite a bit.
It's buried in there.
We have, at numerous levels of review, concluded that that is correct. Yes.
I think that's a major success point going through this review process. So, congrats on that. Any other discussion?
Very good.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? That item passes. Policy item 1B4A is a resolution to award Zoila Morell with an early tenure at Lehman College with an application of bylaw 6.2C2. Wendy?
We'll just, we'll just skip that line. If you pause, I'll start. Dr. Zoila Morell is recognized as a gifted educator and leader, highly respected for her innovative contributions to the scholarship of teaching and learning, into fatigable institutional service and invaluable contributions to childhood education, curricula, and pedagogy, ranging from theoretical to applied methodology courses in the early childhood and childhood education programs. Dr. Morell has held leadership roles in education for over 20 years, including educator, social worker, program director, school principal, higher education department chairperson, and interim associate dean. In addition, Dr. Morell has demonstrated community leadership through her service as an invited member of the New York Education Department's Early Childhood Blue Ribbon Committee, a regional delegate for the New York State Association for Bilingual Education, and an advisor council member for the Westchester Children's Association. Our colleagues from Lehman College, interim Provost Jorge Silva Buras, and School of Education Dean Renee Parmar have joined us today and are available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Wendy. So I move the approval of policy item 1B4A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seemed very worthy. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item passes. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution requesting approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. Wendy?
The information contained in the November report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leave. Faculty are evaluated and reappointed on a systematic basis through a highly rigorous process involving local governance, as well as approval of the institution's chief academic officer and president with the goal of awarding tenure to retain superior faculty. Fellowship leave is granted to faculty to conduct research, improve teaching, or produce creative work as part of the nationally recognized responsibilities of the professoriate. The Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee being presented today was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between September 1st, 2023, and October 13th, 2023.
Thank you. I move approval of policy item 1B5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
I have a question.
Yes, Henry?
Both BMCC and York include what appear to be mere, not mere, simply reappointments with no other action. Is it necessary that those be included for our action?
This is an interesting challenge because this is controlled and run through the HR system as opposed to the academic affairs system. And so it pulls from their records. We go through to see any anomalies that we can pull that are inconsistent and seek clarification. If it's on there, there was some reason that they made some action in terms of the reappointment for it to appear. There is no need for you to have reappointment authority under any of the bylaws that I'm aware of if it wasn't, yeah.
We just get overwhelmed with some of this stuff sometimes. And if these are things that are really being handled through faculty channels and administratively, and we don't have to do them.
Yes.
I've got enough on my plate.
Did you want to say something?
No, what I'm saying is, actually, is the opposite of what Wendy was saying, which is that in our enabling statute, is that in our enabling statute, the only appointments can be done by the board in terms, so we would have to make another sort of, different kind of delegation of authority to say that reappointments would not be coming. So I'm saying it in the reverse.
We don't consider every reappointment. We consider very few reappointments.
No, we consider reappointments through the report.
Every single?
Through the report. The way it was done was through the report, rather than having to have every reappointment come. And we've had situations where reappointments have come that were, it's, you're not, you're not guaranteed tenure, right? You have to come through the tenure process, so you are up for reappointment every year, so you only get an annual appointment. So that's why the reappointments are coming. Through the report, through the report.
Okay, so we will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item passes. Policy Item 1B6 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report.
Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary form via an online dashboard. The Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard makes it possible to explore graphic representations and charts of the academic activity from the previous month and over time using various filters and tools. Highlights from this month's dashboard include the classification of 11 new general education courses among colleges, giving students more options to study in the physical sciences, mathematics, and humanities, and four program actions.
Thank you. So I move approval of Policy Item 1B, 1B6. Is that what we have? No. Yes, 1B6.
1B6.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item passes. Policy Item 1B7A through 1B7E are resolutions to award immediate tenure at two of our institutions with an application of bylaw 6.2B.
As part of national and international communities of scholars, CUNY customarily recognizes the judgment of colleagues at other institutions with respective faculty personnel decisions, and has an expectation of reciprocity. In order to attract renowned scholars in all disciplines to join the university faculty and advance the strategic agenda, there is an expectation that tenure will be awarded upon appointment. The following faculty cohort came to CUNY with tenure from other institutions. From Hunter College, Nicole Bennett in Chemistry, Cara Furman and Kirsten Green, Curriculum and Teaching, and Anna Marie Morrow, Nursing. From John Jay College, Rose Belinda Cardenas, Anthropology.
Okay, so I move approval of Policy Item 1B7A through 1B7E. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? That item passes. With no more items on the policy calendar, I'll now call on Executive Vice Chancellor Hensel to address an information item on the agenda. Okay?
Pursuant to the Board of Trustees' Policy 1.09, CUNY schools and colleges have been conducting a thorough inventory and evaluation of existing centers and institutes, as I mentioned before. As a result, the campuses have identified a number of entities which have become obsolete or have been absorbed by larger entities within their respective institutions. Centers and institutes that were duly authorized by the Board of Trustees but are now inactive will require separate resolutions to decertify them. However, there are also a number of entities historically referred to as centers or institutes for which there is no record of a Board of Trustees' approval or vote. For informational and record-keeping purposes, we present in the calendar the list of inactive entities with no record of board approval. The schools and colleges will remove them from their inventory and stop referring to them as centers and institutes.
Thank you, Wendy. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you all.
And hooray.
That's a beat, that's a beat.